Sorry, I thought I had to log in. Hello, I'm councillor Sean Edmire Richards, councillor for Manor Ward.
And you'll see a number of other people in the room who are the officers that are working with us this morning, would you like to introduce yourselves please?
Good morning, Samantha Bond, legal adviser to the subcommittee.
Good morning, I'm Jane Gough from licensing and I'm here to read the report this morning.
Jay Bell, Democrat Service Officer.
And could I just ask people to introduce themselves as well, so we know who you are this morning?
If I do the introductions, Tim Shear from John Gaunton Partners solicitors for the applicants, and to my left I have Shane McLean who is an area manager for the applicant company.
David Hasier, secretary of changing chef.
Morning David.
Morning.
And good morning to the people sitting in the back as well, welcome. We're not expecting the building to do a fire alarm test this morning, I believe, so if the fire alarm does go off, it actually tells you what to do, it's amazing, but head out to the doors and head towards the peace gardens is probably your best bet, and there are toilets through those doors, gents, closer than ladies, if anybody needs those.
But don't stop services a fire alarm.
No, no, not a good idea. See, the way this building leaks, we're not expecting it to burn down, you see, it would be highly unlikely, so. So, the process for this morning's hearing is fairly straightforward, and you'll be pleased to see that point four of the process says the solicitor to the committee will outline the procedure, so rather than having to listen to me read something else, can I ask Sam to outline the procedure please?
Thank you Chair, yes, you'll just have to listen to me instead. Has everyone got a copy of the papers? If not, we've got some spares that we can hand around if you... Jane, you all right, just to chuck some at the back? Thank you. So, the procedure's right on the back of the papers, page forty-seven. So, the licensing officer, who's Jane this morning, will introduce the report. Any questions concerning the report can be asked by members and the applicant, so if there's anything missing or factually inaccurate, we'll just get that amended for the record there and then. We haven't got any responsible authorities present, the applicant has agreed conditions with South Yorkshire Police prior to the hearing, so they've withdrawn their representations, which is why they're not here today. So, what we'll do is head straight over to the interested parties to detail the relevant representations. Members will then ask some questions, and with the leave of the Chair, the applicant may also have some questions for you as well. Once we've done that, we'll head over to the applicant and their representative to detail the application, provide clarification on the application, and respond to representations made, both in the report and verbally at the hearing today. Again, members and officers can ask questions, and with the leave of the Chair, you'll have the opportunity to ask the applicant questions as well, should you wish to. The applicant will then be given the opportunity to sum up the application, we'll take the options from the licensing officer as detailed in the report, and then we'll just head into private session for members to take legal advice and consider the application. The decision of the licensing committee will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003 and regulations made there under. At any time during the hearing, members can request legal advice, it could be an open session, as we are now, or private session where we just ask you to pop into the room next door, and then when you come back in, we'll feedback what the discussion was. And the hearing is in public this morning, it is live webcast and recorded, and yeah, I think I'm finally done, thank you.
Thank you Sam. Before we start, I just wanted to point, to give a quick point of clarity, my provision of clarity sometimes confuses matters even more, but just to give you the difference between planning and licensing, we, planning and licensing consider two very different bits of legislation and judge things on very different criteria, so it can often come to different decisions on applications. Where the decision of planning differs to the decision of licensing, the most restrictive conditions apply. So, if licensing was to grant somewhere a twenty-four hour licence, but planning said it could only open till one AM, then it could only open till one AM. Similarly, if planning gave a building the option to open twenty-four hours, but we would only licence it till two AM, then it could only licence to two AM. No one committee sort of outjumps the other, but it's the most restrictive that applies. So, whatever licensing approves today, will still be subject to planning regulation, and that would have to change before the opening hours could change. So, I hope that has clarified things a little bit, probably not, but there we go. So, could we have the report then please Jane?
Certainly. Good morning everybody, thank you for coming. So, this is a hearing to determine the application for a variation of the KFC premises licence one six three West Street. So, the applicants are Field Rose Limited, and they have applied to change the layout in accordance with the plan that's in Appendix A of the report, and to extend their opening hours for the provision of late night refreshment between eleven and five AM, seven days a week, and to authorise opening hours for the premises twenty-four hours a day. The current applica... the current premises licence, sorry, is currently in Appendix B of the report. Two point five here in the report states that the Environmental Protection Service have submitted comments regarding the application, but does outline the information that David's just clarified in terms of the planning restrictions that are already in place of the premises, but that doesn't give, didn't give them enough grounds to actually object against it under the Licensing Act, but just made them comments clear there. In terms of the reason for referral this morning, so we have the local resident association changing chef that have applied an objection to the application, and we did have one from South Yorkshire Police, but as Sam has already mentioned, the agreed conditions and shortening of opening hours have been agreed with the applicant prior to this hearing, so they are no longer an objector. So, all the details of what they've agreed is in Appendix C of the report, so I'm just going to scoot down to the appeal section, section seven, save you some reading. The Licensing Act 2003, section one eight one and schedule five makes provision for the appeals to be made by the applicant and those making representations against the decision of the licensing authority to the magistrate's court. The recommendations this morning Chair are that members carefully consider the representations made, and take such steps as the subcommittee consider appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives.
Thank you Jane. Have members got any questions on the report at all? Do the applicants have any questions on the report?
No, thank you.
On the report?
I do, yes, just clarify the opening, is it twenty-four hours, is it open twenty-four hours, is it serving food twenty-four hours? I'm a bit confused now what you said Jane.
Okay, so the applicant has applied to extend their licensed hours, so they've applied to open, to have opening hours twenty-four hours a day, but an actual premises licence allows the provision of late night refreshment between the hours of twenty-three hundred hours and oh five hundred hours. Anything beyond five o'clock in the morning is not licensable anyway, so that wouldn't fall under us, but they've, they've, they've applied to extend their opening hours to what they currently have, their licensed hours, sorry, to five o'clock in the morning, but to open twenty-four hours a day. But they've agreed conditions with South Yorkshire Police that they're going to close between five and seven, so they're not going to be open twenty-four hours.
Okay, so they're going to close, actually no one going in at five, between five and seven, nothing happening, no drivers coming, nothing at all, thank you.
Oh, that's, that's helped. And so, in the absence of any responsible authorities, it's over to you as David as interested party to outline your objections to this application.
Okay, thanks all, thanks for that David. Yeah, okay. Yeah, on behalf of the local residents, the reason we're objecting for near twenty-four hour is that if it's this degree, this is going to be our main issue, it's going to be a precedent. This one, KFC opens, the next one opens, the next one, and it's just a, dare I say, a domino effect, and everyone, and everyone is, and it becomes twenty-four hours, and West Street is, is very loud every day. Okay, as the population of the city centre is increasing to thirty-five, thirty-five thousand under current redevelopment, and this is a must know, we need to build houses, so we're building them in, in the city. So, we need to focus on residential accommodation, we need, well, we need to balance between commercial interests, and as a residence group, we're, we're not anti-commercial, we're not anti-economy, we want the economy to thrive, but we need to balance between commercial and domestic needs, and it will become more and more acute as, as more people start to live in the city centre. Okay. Okay, so are we overriding the need of people to get a good night's sleep, or getting fast food throughout the night? We know important people sleep, I think you all know the mental health and the physical health benefits of sleep, so if people aren't getting any sleep, that is, that is detrimental to, to residents, so again, we need to have a balance. I can ask the, later on, but the applicant, but is there evidence that sufficient people want fast food throughout the night? Obviously during the overnight hours, lots of food collections, agencies, delivery, Deliveroo, Just Eat, taxis, cars, this brings lots of traffic noise disturbance to the area. And we, what you may not know, but taxi drivers, Deliveroo drivers, they're very friendly, they peep in the horns, shouting to each other, very noisy, and if you lived on West Street, you'd understand that, and some of my, some of the residents could back me up on that. Yeah, noise, noise from customers. We see, we hear shouting, screaming, singing, singing till four to five o'clock in the area most nights. So, is, are few people wanting fast food, is that acceptable, is that worth it to, for, for a bit more fast food? The rubbish in, in the area is tremendous from previous, from other takeouts, including KFC, I'm sure, and anyways it's increasing rubbish on the streets, if you walk round West Street, you'll, you'll see it scattered across the streets after a night out, and the cost of council cleaning will increase. Okay, I'm sure the businesses would want, and do try and prevent their customers causing, causing issues, but once they leave the premises, what can they do? They might be on the street, so. So. Just to sum up, the, the four plims of the, of the, of the Licensing Act, the prevention of public nuisance, we're objecting to say that this, this opening up to set a precedent will become twenty-four, and the public nuisance will, will be too great, so that's ends my objection.
Thank you, that's all. I'll just open this up for questions then now, starting with members. Ian, is there anything that you'd like to ask at this stage?
Yes, I mean, I empathise with your thought about disruption and noise and so on and so forth. The one point in what you did make about is there a demand? Well, in a sense, that, that will sort itself out, won't it? Because if there isn't a demand, they're unlikely to remain open for those hours, because it's a business, isn't it? So, in a, in a, in that sense, that part of it is a business question, isn't it, that may or may not, but I, you know, I do understand what you're saying about the right to sleep and so on, but as I said, the point about is there the demand? Well, if there isn't the demand, they're not going to be open, are they?
Yes and no, you're, you're right, if no one's there, but experience knows that people are there, they hang around these, these takeouts places, so we see that anyway, so it would just add fuel to the fire.
Sean Ed, is there anything you'd like to ask at this stage?
No, thank you Chair.
Good, you've touched on some of this, but it would just be really helpful if you could tell me a little bit more about what sort of problems and issues you face, and how regularly are you getting sort of disturbance every night until, to what, just tell me a bit more about what it's like to be a resident of there.
Is it impossible to bring in one of my residents behind me?
You don't object to me bringing in local residents, just tell me a bit about what it's like?
Okay, let's, let's talk.
It's always difficult here, because if I object, I'm seen as trying to block something that may come in. However, this has been sprung upon us because there's no written documentation from any of these. I appreciate the concerns you have, I would just ask that it's borne in mind, no other representations, written representations have been submitted, and it has to stay within this representation, and be conscious that this is all new to us. So, we could object and ban it, but we're confident in our position, but I'd ask you to bear that in mind.
I'm happy to jump in and say probably it wouldn't be permitted, given that there's no prior submitted written representation, and I think we've not had it on record that you wanted to come and make representation, so if you conform it within what you're wanting to say in reference to the Chair's question, that's fine, but we can't really...
So, you just want me to talk, yeah? Okay, right, okay, so.
If they could, if anyone is speaking, if they could just confirm where they're from as well, where they live?
Okay, I live in the city centre, I don't actually live on West Street, so, but my, 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 my residents behind me have talked to me this morning about the, about the shouting and the noise that they get practically every, every night, not every night, but practically every night, so. It's, it wakes them up, it causes them disturbance, as I've gone through the previous points.
And is this till sort of four or five o'clock in the morning?
Yes.
All right, thank you, I don't have further questions at the moment, so, do you have any questions for, for the interested parties?
I don't think so, thank you sir.
Then it's over to you to state your case to us this morning.
Thank you sir, then, in usual manner, I will present the application, but I have here with me representative from the company who can ask any questions, or I may be able to assist with matters, if that's acceptable. So, this is an application, it falls into two parts, and I do just want to clarify on the change of layout, it's just a minor update which we included, so I'm not going to dwell on that, because I don't see that there's any objection to any of that aspect. And the second aspect is in relation to an extension of the hours for the already existing premises, and as your licensing officer said, you've got a copy of the licence at Appendix B, I think it is, and what that does is shows that the site currently has authorisation to operate till one AM midweek and two AM on a weekend, so it is not a brand new licence without a track record, it is not a new licensed premises that has, say, a midnight licence, it is well experienced in operating in some of the key hours of the night time economy, by which I mean up to two AM. Yes, it is an extension to five AM, but I think that's important when putting into the context of this application for this set of premises. We have the one representation, and this application is by an applicant company which is, forms part of a group of companies, all within a banner of family ownership, based in Sheffield, with a number of different operations across different types of premises, and very experienced in the quick service restaurant market, so they have franchises within Sheffield and wider, for KFC, for Costa, for Taco Bell, for Dunkin Donuts, and, I missed one, yeah, so there are a hundred and twenty outlets, but it is a Sheffield, if I can say it like this, born and bred company, and the first site was on Middlewood Road, and it's the KFC that still operates on Middlewood Road. Very important, because some may get the impression that it's a large conglomerate, nothing wrong with that, or that it is a single operator, again, nothing wrong with that, but this is a, a community based, if I can say it like that, that takes account of what goes on, it's a community, because it is steeped in having been there for forty years, extremely important to bear in mind. The application has one objection, as I've said, the police made a representation, which you will have in your committee papers, they weren't objecting outright, they were just saying, we would like a better CCTV condition, we already have CCTV, and we've discussed that and agreed that with them, and we would like a two hour closure period between five AM and seven AM, and my clients were happy to operate and agree that, so that is offered as a condition which would be enforceable, so it does give the break requested, but it is important to remember they weren't asking for an earlier closure around two, three, four, or objecting, that's important, so that's what I say on that. I will touch briefly on planning, very, very briefly, because as, as has been explained to all, they are two separate regimes, there's a comment in the papers, and to an extent, an applicant for either or is always faced with, which do I do first? Because I could be faced with, you don't have licensing coming for planning, or vice versa. We're fully aware of the situation in relation to planning, but they are totally separate and shouldn't impact upon this application. The only thing I will say, is I've looked, I'm not a planning lawyer, a licensing lawyer, so it is very much from, if I can put it, layman's law, layman's lawyer type of look at it, but the history to that seems to me to be that those were the hours that were put forward, so it wasn't imposed, it was agreed, because that was the application, the existing hours, there's no suggestion they were imposed to be restricted, and we tried to get more back then, so that's all I would say in relation to that, but it's not really relevant to today's explanation and, and application. So, it's important, I think, to bear in mind the area, Sheffield is already, in my submission, a twenty-four hour city. Yes, there are residents in the city, and it is important they get the right sleep, I don't think anyone would, would argue against that, but it is a large city with operators of all different types in the city centre, and particularly on West Street, and I will restrict my comments to the most relevant premises being other late night refreshment, food led premises, without alcohol licences, but of course, you will know, as members of the committee, there are already existing licensed premises selling alcohol with similar long hours for the sale of alcohol, and both on sales and off sales, and you have twenty-four hour off licences convenient stores nearby to this site, so it would be wrong to say that this was pushing out the boundaries in relation to how that area of the city works and operates at present, and that is relevant, because it's part of the representation that's been submitted. However, if I restrict my comments to late night refreshment premises, then on West Street itself, and in fact, immediately next door, there is a premises with an existing licence authorising until five AM, and that is the Domino's Pizza at one six seven to one six nine, so on the same side, right next door, is one that has already got that licence, we're not pushing back the barriers, or inviting everybody else, and even if we were, that would be for you to decide on a different occasion, if an application came before you, you're looking at this application, this applicant, and the track record for this application. So, you have, and I'll just use numberings and street, of West Street, Domino's at one six seven, which has a five AM licence, one hundred and nineteen has a four AM licence, one hundred and twelve has a six AM licence, which I think is actually a five AM licence, but with opening till six, and one five two has a five AM licence, one eight three, three AM, so there is a bit of a spread, but certainly not pushing out there, and that is relevant in relation to, are we pushing out the hours? No, we're not. And I would say there is a balance, certainly, but nothing in this application will upset that balance, because there's nothing adverse to say about these premises, there's been no criticism in relation to specifics on complaints about potential public nuisance, and we've been there, as I say, for some years, operating till two AM. There's no crime and disorder, and you know that because, or no significant crime and disorder, we would say, when I ask my client, as I always do, have you got any issues with complaints or disorder, in this occasion, I had to check back, they couldn't find any. So, but for your purposes, if there were significant issues of concern, you would get objections from the police, who do raise objections, as you know, or from the environmental health officer around noise nuisance, and you haven't got that, and that's relevant. So, we say we have a very good track record existing, just picking up on one comment about littering, we do routine litter patrols around and about, but of course, once people go away, they have, under the Licensing Act, personal responsibility for how they act and operate, whether that's from alcohol led premises, food led premises, takeaway late night refreshment premises, off licences, you know that that is in the guidance to you. Just picking up on a couple of points, it wasn't quite phrased in these terms, but I think councillor Homme, you picked up on business, and is there a demand, and will the market decide? That, that is relevant, but of course, in the representation, what they're actually saying is, is there a need? Is there a need for this licence to be granted? And again, you will know the guidance, your policy says, it's not relevant to you, it's not something for your consideration, the considerations are the four licensing objectives. So, on that basis, there is no evidence of crime and disorder, we are a good operator, I ask you to grant this application, certainly, we appreciate the needs of the area, and as I was talking, and it hasn't been mentioned, I will mention it, there are flats above us, there are flats, as you look at the premises, on rentals, and I said, how do you get on with the tenants? And the comment came from my client, they're some of our best customers. I think that speaks volumes, so we don't have issues with nuisance, from what we do, don't have issues with crime and disorder, we think we're a good operator, we have systems in place, we are bound by certain protocols within the KFC, or family, if I can put it like that, rather than organisation, because we're independent, we're a franchisee, so we, we believe, we know, we promote the licensing objectives now, and there's no reason to say we won't do so going forward, so I'll pause there, we are a positive application in this sense, but appreciative of the issues that are, could be around us.
Thank you. I'll open this up for questions, and now, starting with Sean Ed, Sean Ed, do you like to ask?
This new technology for old ladies. You said that the franchisee has many, many outlets with different franchises, et cetera. Are any of those open until five AM?
Yes, we've got, we've got others, just to give examples, we've got, and this is a rolling process, but we certainly have others that are, and are licensed twenty-four hours, and we go into other cities, so Doncaster we have one, and then over in the, I'm just trying to think, because I dealt with it recently, over in Lancaster, so it's quite a big area, but we do, we're well experienced in dealing with late night operations, yeah.
So, it's not a solely based Sheffield franchise, so your, your sort of community based model is actually a bit bigger than your, your initial setting out?
I think that's fair to say, what I would say is, we started in Sheffield, we're based in Sheffield, the vast majority of our outlets are in Sheffield, but we're successful and growing further and out, but out into South Yorkshire, and then some further afield, but the heart of the base is in Sheffield.
Ian, is there anything you'd like to ask?
Yes, I just wanted to ask you about, you'd be disappointed to know, I haven't often been in a KFC, I certainly haven't been in that one, but my only observation when I have been in one, i- is that there didn't appear to be many people out, out front, and so, I wonder, you know, if you're going through the night, what front of house staff are you going to have, are you going to have security staff, what, you know, what, how are you going to deal with any, I know you said you don't have antisocial behaviour problems, but I'm, I'm sure everybody does at some point, how, how are you going to, how do you deal with that, and, you know, what staff, staffing have you got for that?
I think, the only things I can say on that is, we go on the experience we have at the moment, till two o'clock at a weekend, which is big time of night time economy, I don't, I would say that this West Street would be busy from, say, eleven-ish at night to midnight through, and I don't think it will get busier than two AM, but will stay busy until perhaps later in the night, so our experience is, we don't have particular issues, we don't use security staff, if it were needed, we would look at that and we would do so, but we have sufficient staff on that serve and deal with the customers necessary, I've got, it's, we can perhaps expand upon that, and I would just say, obviously in discussions with the police, they have not requested security on, at this occasion. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, similar to what you said, because we don't have security, don't really have any issues at them kind of time of nights, it's, yeah, after you noted on record.
Yeah, I mean, the point of my question was, if there was an incident, who deals with it? Just the manager who's in, or?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct, yeah, so we would follow our internal protocols from KFC, so we'd obviously deal with the situation, that means calling the police or dealing with it. That means calling the police or dealing with it in-house, absolutely. And to your point around not having enough staff on, we have plenty of staff on back about us. And they would go into the lobby area to make sure it's maintained and safe for our customers at all times. Because that's part of the KFC procedures.
Thank you. I was going to make a similar point about, you know, obviously it is located in an area where people go out drinking, go out for a good time. But you're saying you don't actually have issues with people coming in and drinking or causing problems, that's not your experience?
That is the submission we're giving, absolutely, based on our existing experience. We don't have, I can't say there'd be never anyone come in and may cause an issue, but it would be dealt with in-house. If it was sufficiently serious, we would go to the police, but there's really no evidence of that having had to be done to date.
Thank you. The second point is about engagement. You've been there a while now, you're saying you have a reasonable relationship with the tenants that live above the property. We have, you know, a very effective city centre residence group. Have you engaged with them at all, or is it a group that you would talk to going forward to try and kind of resolve any issues before they actually happen?
To this point, we haven't had any involvement, which this application and this client has not really been aware particularly of changing Sheffield now, as was Chef Change and then I think Scrag before that. But hasn't had interaction, but there's no reason there couldn't be interaction going forward. And to an extent, I would say, in fact, we perhaps don't know about them, shows there haven't been any particular issues, but certainly wouldn't rule out if it was felt to be helpful.
And just finally from me, a point was made about, not just customers, but delivery drivers. And I just wonder what percentage of the business is aiming for sort of deliveries as opposed to getting people through the doors?
I've just asked him to ponder that, if he can, I've not asked the percentages. We did discuss about delivery drivers, yes, we do have delivery drivers that work and come and collect from, as you would expect. And we have protocols with them and all of the delivery drivers that may come. And there is a process we can go through to escalate if there was an issue to get them removed, if there was a problem. And we're acutely aware of that. But percentage-wise, roughly 30%. It is, KFC is certainly, you know, it is a business that engages in delivery, but equally is one that is there for the reason of providing those on West Street with the food that they're asking for and requiring.
So Sam, do you have any questions for the applicants?
Just a couple, thank you. It might be in the plan, so apologies if I'm just repeating that. What's the internal capacity in terms of seating or, do you know?
It's not on the plan.
No.
Around about the 20 mark.
Thank you. And you said it's a business sort of rooted in the community and community-based, obviously with having residents directly above and quite close by in the vicinity. I think you touched on it after councillor Barker's question, but has there been any involvement with them prior to the application?
Not really, no, other than with our customers that are above that contact us for deliveries.
Thank you.
David, do you have any questions for the applicants? I think you might have one or two.
I want to say acceptance, but Sheffield, a 24-hour place, it's not. People in the city centre, we've got to put people into the city centre because of the shortage of housing. So it cannot be a 24-hour city like New York was in the 70s. So we need to draw back from that. Now, I have no problem with the way you behave, you're an excellent company. But it's the precedent, it's adding to the appeal. Your customers will come in, but they will then go on to West Street, that's the issue, not in your shop, it's actually in the streets outside. And just to pick up what the police said, they said there'll be high levels of custom in the early hours leading to potential issues with those in drink. So the police, I take note, there are concerns away, but they've got no real interest into disruption of residents, that's not their issue. They don't look after the mental and physical health of residents in the city centre. On the, you've talked, you said you've talked to some of the people above. I saw the notices on the window. Did you advertise this in the press? Okay, can you tell me which date that was?
Oh, just for the record, yes.
Can you tell me which, when it was, because we didn't see it, maybe we missed it.
It was submitted and has been accepted, I think it's over to legal services.
We wouldn't be here if they hadn't advertised it in accordance to the regulations. I'm not sure where it was advertised, I don't have access to that information, but Jane might be able to.
This is for my own peace of mind. Jane?
Any further questions while Jane's looking up that? I'm sure she'll have it somewhere. I missed you because of the chimes there.
No more questions, Dave.
The law, I mean, the legislation certainly requires that an advert is placed in the local press.
I appreciate that, David, but no, mistakes happen, yeah. While Jane's looking at something at the very start of the meeting, you said you were filming it? The photos of myself and my colleagues back there, they won't be advertised in the press, will they, last time? Yeah, so one of my colleagues was here and their picture got put into the press.
Yeah, it is a public meeting.
Right, so by actually coming to this meeting, we've agreed to be in the press if it happens.
Yeah, I think as part of the process of submitting the representations, the licensing officer advises that with it being a public meeting that the press and general public have access to, unless there's an exceptional reason for you to be anonymous. For example, if you've received threats of violence, then we can redact it. But given that it's a public meeting and the legislation is written in that. Yeah? Right, okay. Right, I do apologise that you weren't advised, I'm sorry about that, I do apologise.
I think the camera does tend to hone in on microphones as opposed to anything else, so there's a strong potential. We could actually, if my computer worked, which it probably doesn't, could go online now and see what is being filmed and what isn't. But it does tend to be fairly focused and it goes, you know, it will be the face of the person who's talking, I suppose. It doesn't capture a wide background.
I don't want to move things on, sir, but I can say I lodged the app, it was advertised in a normal way, it was submitted and acknowledged.
I have found it, just as you've spoken, it was in the Sheffield Mercury. And the date was in the issue of the week, 31st of January to the 6th of Feb. I can show you if you want to see it on my screen.
Oh, okay, that was wonderful, thank you very much.
No problem.
And so would you like to sum up the application then?
Yeah, I will keep my, I'll keep my comments very brief, and they are in relation to the law, safe to say, it is nice to get that there was no criticism of the premises from those making representations in relation to the application. I understand the concerns raised. I would have to say, I do think it is a 24-hour city, there are different versions of 24-hour cities. I don't think we're New York, we're Sheffield, I'm proud of that, but it is a 24-hour city. You can go there early in the morning and you can see workers going to and from work, so that's what I say. Yes, the residence peace and quiet is important. And nothing we're proposing is saying we're going to change that. So in relation to the law, and I'll be as brief as I can be, but you will know, I've already touched on the planning issue, we've covered that very well. I think in relation to issues around the guidance, I would point you to paragraph 9.12, which is the responsible authorities. And you should look to the responsible authorities as your primary source in relation to issues. And if they had evidence of issues in relation to this applicant, this application, this premises, they would have made a representation which they would have pursued. There was no objection to the application in total. The police merely sought some tweaks, if I can put it like that, to the application, which we were happy to agree. Nothing from the environment health officer on noise or any other responsible authorities. Some, I have to say, of the comments relate to the area. You as a licensing authority have not adopted a cumulative impact policy. And that is relevant because I go back to no comments, adverse comments in relation to these premises. People away from the premises, yes, but people have personal responsibility, again referring to the guidance, is very specific that individuals are responsible for their activities away from premises, all premises, and should be responsible in that regard. We as responsible operators will look after and ensure around our area, in the premises, as I hope has been explained in the response to the questions about staffing supervision, to maintain our very good record. And I will finish just with the case of Thwaites, which of course will no doubt have been stated to you many times, but does say you have to look for real evidence of concerns in relation to this application. And I submit, there is no, there is no real evidence of concern in relation to this application. I ask you to grant it, appreciating we will continue to be a very good operator and aware of the potential for issues, if I can put it like that, that are raised. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have the options then, please, Jane?
You certainly can. So the options open to the committee this morning are to vary the premises licence in the terms requested, to vary the premises licence with conditions, or to reject the whole or part of the application.
Thank you. Could I ask people now to leave with the licensing officer while we take some legal advice and come to a decision? And as soon as we've made that decision, we'll invite you back in and tell you what that is if you wish to stay. Thank you, everyone, for your time and representations this morning. Having considered this, the decision of the licensing committee is to grant as applied for, you know, subject to the agreed conditions with South Yorkshire Police. The reason we've come to that decision is that the evidence presented today shows that you are a responsible business, that there is no sign currently of any issues arising from your business. And licensing has to be evidence-based, well, where there is no evidence that there is a problem, we can't take action on the basis that there might be at some stage in future. However, what we can do as a licensing committee is that should this, I mean, obviously the business can't open longer than its planning hours at the moment, and will need planning permission before it could operate the hours that licensing has granted this morning. But the strength of licensing is that if subsequently there is evidence that there's a problem, then we can take action, action to restrict hours or even to revoke a licence. But we can only act on evidence. So hopefully, that evidence will not arise through the business, we'll operate and we'll not cause people issues. But if it does, then people are very, very welcome to come back and we will look at this again and may come to an entirely different decision. But that's the decision of the licensing subcommittee this morning. And again, thank you for your time and your attendance today.
Thank you, sir.
Just to wrap up, sorry, do the boring legal bit, you do have the right of appeal against that decision. So should you wish, that's within 21 days to the magistrate's court. But you'll get a notice following the hearing that will set everything out to you. Thank you, everyone, for coming.